All right, it's six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. We'll ask Commissioner Hester to say a prayer of us and follow my pledge.
This is the day that the Lord has made goodness rejoice and be glad in his presence. Our Father, we come just to say thank you, and thank you for this perfect day. Thank you, God, for everyone that came out today. You know our minds, you know our heart. As we enter to our meeting, give us the strength to do the right thing that we need to do for this county. Oh, heaven, Father, we just want to say thank you. Bless everyone that is here today. I let the words in my mouth and the meditation of my heart be accepted being thy side, oh, Lord, my strength and my redeemer. Amen. Everybody say amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While we do consider it an honor to do business here in Tiff County, we don't want to dress up this much to do anything. And to have our beauty struck, well, some of us had our beauty struck, some of us were just struck, but anyway, group picture taken. All right, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to come talk to us about anything?
My name's Chris Virchell, 2415 Madison Drive, unincorporated Tiff County. Section four point three point two zero of the Tiff County Unified Development Code carefully defines adult entertainment establishments as any commercial use or establishment that includes an adult bookstore, novelties, adult movie house, or explicit media outlet, or, quote, "an establishment where performances are held by bottomless and topless dancers." Moreover, section two point one point two designates a special zone for commercial adult, especially for these establishments. And yet, not a single adult entertainment establishment exists in this county. In fact, not one square foot of the county is zoned commercial adult, which begs the question, why would this body put time, effort, and thought into regulating the land use that doesn't exist? The answer is clear to anyone who understands the mechanics of local governance. The commission added those sections to the UDC because they understood that they cannot regulate anything that is not defined in the ordinances. The commission puts strip clubs and adult novelty stores into the county's ordinances so that they can have the power to keep them out of the county. They knew that if adult entertainment establishments were not clearly defined in the UDC, then section two point three point two point B of the UDC would provide an opportunity for those kinds of businesses to set up shop without permission from the board. Here's how. Quote, "Any land use that is not identified in the table is prohibited unless it is found to be substantially similar by the manager or his or her designated." End quote. The UDC further provides that the county manager, if the county manager says no, the matter can be appealed to the planning and zoning board of the state. If they say no, it can be appealed to the Tiff County Superior Court. This body would effectively have no say at all on approval or denial of adult entertainment establishments in unincorporated Tiff County, were it not for the specific definition and guidelines set forth in the ordinances to govern that category of business. I'm reminding the commission of this proactive approach you have taken with adult entertainment establishments, because I humbly ask, do you provide yourselves the same power to regulate cryptocurrency mining before it is too late? Cryptocurrency mining company-driven data systems still owns the agricultural land in this county where they have explored building facility. I don't expect this body to grant permission to build a facility, but I don't believe they necessarily need your permission. Electrical substations can be built on agricultural land. Would their operation be substantially similar to an electrical substation? I don't know. That would be a question to be answered in court. To abhorrent this problem, this county's Unified Development Code must be revised in order to close its vulnerability. Simply add a definition to the U state of the Unified Development Code for cryptocurrency mining. Allow the cryptocurrency mining activity in one zone only. Include supplemental standards for cryptocurrency mining which stipulates safety standards, noise pollution restrictions, and other requirements which are at least as stringent and demanding as the standards recently adopted by the city of Tiff. Thank you for attention to this important matter.
Thank you, Dr. Shale. All right, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pamela Bateman, and I live at twenty-five oh one Wendellon Avenue across forty-one over here. And I just came up here to talk to you all about a problem that we're having on the street right in front of my house. For the majority of the time, it seems like a racing strip, because it's a straight shot from one end of the road to the next. They put a stop sign right there by the old curb, the parking lot. Most of them be going too fast to even stop for that stop sign. My granddaughter almost was ran over one day by a young man that was coming through really fast. The bus was there, the bus had the stop sign out and everything, and my granddaughter, my husband was standing on the side of the road waiting for this to come from the bus to him. And I was in the kitchen, and all I heard was a loud honk. It was just a drawn-out honk from the bus. And I ran out there, and my husband said that had my granddaughter, usually she, when they see one of us, they'll just get off the bus and run. It was two of them. Had she just ran that day, he would have ran her over. And the bus driver was like, I had, she was waving out the window and everything, but he had his music blasting. And my husband said he was going about fifty, sixty, seventy miles an hour. And this is every single day. And I fear that somebody is going to have a fatality out there soon. And that's what we really don't want. We don't want somebody's child, because children drive the go-karts and they drive the golf carts around in the neighborhood. We don't want anybody to end up dead before, you know, something is done about it. And like I said, sometimes they're going so fast, it's like two cars, one behind the other, and it's like they're racing, because they'll get right up on each other and they'll go around the other, and they're just going back and forth around each other all the way down to the end of the road. And I just would like to see, can we get something done about that as far as trying to get something to slow them down? Because this is an everyday thing, and I live, my house is right in front of the road. And also, another issue that we're having, on the side of our house is a dirt road, and it goes around into a U shape and come out on the next block. And we're starting, people are starting to dump stuff down there. They're starting to dump old mattresses and stuff down there. And I don't know who to speak to about that matter, because I don't know who owns this place that it's being dumped at.
We'll take care of it.
We're having a problem, because a lot of times we see cars, and there's absolutely nothing back there, except a bunch of old buses and stuff. But we beginning to see a lot more traffic going around that curb on a regular basis.
Does that dirt road have a name?
I think it's Constant Leon Drive. It's directly across from Constant Leon. It may be Constant Leon, but they are dumping stuff there. And...
When you get through, Chris, raise your hand. Mr. Chris Davis, if you'll give him all that information on that, he will look into that for you.
Yes, sir. Well, I just wanted to say thank you all. I thought I was going to be very nervous looking at all these serious things. This is the first time I've ever done this, and as much as I love to talk, it looked like it was going to be easier than it might be. But looking at you all's smiles, it made it a whole lot easier, especially Miss Melissa, because I had spoken with her about it. And, Miss Melissa, if you don't mind me telling this right quick, I had to call and tell Miss Melissa I was sorry last week. Because I called and spoke to Miss Melissa probably about five or six months ago about the matter, but because nothing was done about it, I felt like that was the purpose we put them in office. But when you don't know, you don't know. And Miss Melissa didn't know that I held a grudge against her for that, but I had to call her, because the Lord in me told me I had to call her, and I had to tell her I was sorry. She didn't know I was upset. But when I found out that I was supposed to do my part, so many times we expect you all to do your part, but when we don't know that there's a part for us to play, we just don't know. Because when I spoke with a police officer about the situation, especially about the speeding, he said, you need to report it to your county commission. And that's what I did. And so I felt like she didn't do her job, because nothing was done about it. But I'm just thankful to be able to stand before you all and just put out petition on, you know, out front for you all to know what's going on before there is a fatality on that road. I want to do everything in my power to keep people, grownups and children, alive. And I pray that y'all think on that situation and that you all do what you can do.
Thank you all.
That is such a balanced presentation that you made. I apologize.
Well, thank you.
Very balanced statement.
Ms. Bateman, will you make sure that Chris has your contact information, your phone number, stuff, so I can talk about the speeding issue? All right, anyone else in the audience that would like to speak with us? We may have erroneously stated there would be another public hearing on the solar farm, there will not be, so if you're wanting to speak on that, you would need to come at this time and speak about the solar farm.
Hey, how's it doing, everybody? My name is Dustin Griffin. I live at forty-one sixty-five, going to Highway one twenty-five north. Before we get started, I'd like to pass out a packet each one of you guys put together. Forty-one sixty-five, going to Highway one twenty-five. First off, I'd like to say thank you for the time to speak again. I know we've already spoken on this matter once, but I'd like to start off by saying opinions. You know, opinions, as much as we appreciate it, and we love to hear the opinions of our neighbors and our community members, we can't make our decisions off of opinions. As we go forth, we have to make our decisions off the facts. And the facts in this situation, our solar farms are not the best in Tiff County, especially in this section of town. This has been proven and voted on by this board many times. I'd like to hear of the purpose of the ordinance, the ordinance that you guys put together. The ordinance was put together to encourage the location of solar energy production facilities in areas where any potential adverse impacts in the community would be minimized. What is the meaning of adverse impact? Unfavorable, disagreeable, unpleasant, or negative effect that goes against the direct conditions? From there, I'd like to take a look at the packet that I put forward for you guys today. This is from January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. There was two applications submitted for solar farms that was denied by this committee. Petition one was from Miss Norman Carrington Boyd, located at Tax Mountain zero zero five seven, parcel one ninety-seven and two sixty-one, on Carrington Director Road. In this petition, the planning commission met and recommended approval of this application. However, this staff did not recommend approval, because several adverse standards for exercising zoning powers were found to cause possible adverse conditions. Petition two, Carrington Farms, located on Tax Mountain zero zero five eight, parcel zero one one, on Carrington Director Road. Again, in this petition, the planning commission met and recommended approval of this application. However, this staff did not recommend approval, because of several adverse standards for exercising zoning powers were found to cause possible adverse conditions. I understand that these two applications were to rezone that land from R one to AU, but the planning commission met and recommended approval. So even though Mr. Chris Davis stated that this would create a spot zoning issue, since none of the surrounding properties was owned AU, this was not the reason for the denial. The reason for denial was for several adverse standards for exercising zoning powers were found to cause possible adverse conditions. So if these two petitions listed above were denied because of possible adverse conditions slash impacts, why are we now considering a third solar farm application located less than three-quarters of a mile from the two proposed locations above? Let's now look at the potential impacts of the first two solar farms, what the first two solar farms would have had with surrounding neighbors located within a half-mile radius. If you'll flip to the very last page, I've utilized U Pro and U Public to identify a half-mile radius around all three of those parcels. Within the Boyd, within the Boyd Farm application, there were nineteen homes, three businesses, one church, all located within a half-mile radius. Within the Carrington Farms application, there were seventy-six homes, three businesses, three churches, and one fire department within a half-mile radius. Now, if that was enough to deny those applications, why are we now considering a solar farm that would have a much larger impact on, or adverse impact on our community? With the Fletcher Farm application, there will be a hundred and thirteen homes, three businesses, two churches, one fire department, all impacted within a half-mile radius. I'll close with this. I challenge all of you to look at the facts in front of you and make the best decision for what, for what, the best decision for Tiff County, not for my landlord. Thank you for your time.
Are we taking turns, or?
Whoever's next, you being the disponent, go ahead.
Thanks for having us again, and I think, so, what's your name?
Dustin Griffin.
Dustin, I think Dustin brings a good point, and I think the point is we make a really good neighbor. I think you won't know that we're there when we've, when we're done with this thing. And we only bring taxes, we're paying taxes to the Tiff County, but we're not using any of the services. So to your point, yes, we are there, but we make a great neighbor. And I'll just highlight a couple of things. I know we talked about this last month, but we've, I think we're pretty excited about this opportunity to work with y'all in Tiff County, and I think we've come up with a revised site plan that addresses all the concerns earlier last month and the community. And I wonder if everybody has seen the revised site plan? Want to pass that out, or?
Sure, I actually have a copy of that.
Anybody want to check it out? I'll leave one up here. So we've addressed the visual concern. We're now over seven hundred and fifty feet off of Georgia Highway one twenty-five, so that's over two football fields. We pulled it far back off the road. I know there's concern to the south where we, there's housing developments. We pulled it three hundred and twenty feet off the road, or off the property line to the south. So not only have we pulled it, we pulled it far back into sort of the pocket back there to bring it off the road away from the development, but then we've also added the veg state of buffer to the south, to the south line. So that's just in addition to the, well, here. Noise was a concern from last month. We've got noise study here, and just kind of the highlights of it. Our solar farm's sixty-five decibels at the, at the loudest point, which is right at our equipment pad. And sixty-five decibels, just to put in perspective, is right about between a vacuum cleaner and regular speech. So at a hundred and fifty feet, our solar farm is fifty decibels, and that brings it to average home is fifty and a quiet library is forty, so somewhere between a quiet library and average home. That's at a hundred and fifty feet. Our equipment pad is a hundred and sixty-seven feet from the nearest property line. So it's very minimal noise at the closest property line. Decommissioning was brought up last month, and we had the decommission plan already in place, but we've added a decommission bond. I know there was concern, the escrow account was brought up, and a bond V, similar to an escrow account. So I've got a copy of that bond's implementation. It's also been passed out, if anybody would like to see it. Not just an extra guarantee that that'd be a place for the life of the solar farm from the bank guaranteeing that, you know, if something were to happen, the land would go back to Aggies. The money would be there, and go back to Aggies. Just to kind of talk about taxes again real quick, like I said, thirty-eight thousand dollars the first year of personal property tax that we pay, and then for the lifetime of the project, it's half a million dollars in Tiff County. And so that's just taxes. And again, no, we make a good neighbor, no burden to the infrastructure. We don't use the services, so it's just money to the county. No cars on the road, no water, no sewer, no kids in the school, so we're not using any of the, any of the services. Safety was brought up last month, and just a reminder, it's the same power equipment that you'd see on a Georgia Power pole, and everything's built to the national electric grid, so it's no different than any other Georgia power equipment. That's about it. The, who benefits from the power generated? It's used locally, so Georgia Power, this is a cheap way for Georgia Power to produce power, which then benefits all of us, the ratepayers. So it's, in the end, at the end of the day, it's just a lower cost of power for all of us. So like I said, we're super excited. We're going to work on this thing for a long time. You know, I want to put it, Mr. Fletcher, give him what he wants on his, on his land, and I think we've really found a solution based on all the feedback from the community, a way to do that with our revised site plan. So my colleague, Goss, is here with me. Denver Braswell is also here. We have two solar farms on his land in Culpa County down the road. So if you have any questions, you don't want to get a biased opinion on, then, you know, he could hopefully answer some of those questions, so. What were you going to do? Thanks. I'll leave the site plan up here.
All right, anyone else?
Good evening. A while since I looked at some of y'all's faces. Our next family, actually, I'm a twenty-long night road. Just a couple of concerns, I guess, that I have, is that, I wonder, if I'm standing right, this is still going to be zoned agricultural land? Okay, I got a problem with that, because it won't be agricultural land. It's pure definition of commercial pension. It's there for resale, and, you know, you mentioned, worried about it being on Georgia Power, could affect the rates of anybody on the Georgia Power network. But we're only going to say that it doesn't do anything to that, so, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't affect that. Another issue I've got is, as we mentioned last time, and if you mentioned this, I'll just follow you on sorry, but it was pure fact about thirty years down the road from this place, or whatever it is, it's fire, we're going back to agricultural land. You know, who, who the fuck would clean it up, clean it up, get it back to agricultural tax? And he said he was. Well, what kind of guarantees we got that somebody's going to be there for a year? None. You know, is there any way, if it passes, an escrow account sometime be set up for this? Because I honestly don't believe the taxpayers need to clean it up.
He did mention that.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I missed, I missed what he said.
There would be a bond set up.
It would be great.
Guaranteed by the bank.
Yes, that's, that's good info. And another thing that's concerning is just, besides the savings wise, if you look at an area, a map of that area from, from Highway one twenty-five, nearly out to Good gracious, across those, those rural roads and whatnot, it's, it's nothing but, it's nothing but open fields. And I'm worried about a precedence being set that this might continue on. And so that's a concern that I have. I know y'all have made a decision that's better for the county. I'm not doubting that whatsoever, but as a resident out there, and as a taxpayer in the county, I just, you know, had a few things I needed to say.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
All right, does anyone else have anything different to speak to for this solar farm? Okay, so we'll close the public comments in, if someone else wants to speak to us. And we had another one make an appointment to speak to us. We do have one item that needs to be added to the agenda. Mr. Carter, you want to cover that?
Mr. Chairman, uh, sorry. Doc, let me straight here. The item to be added to the agenda is a twenty-twenty-five all-system safety project. It's Georgia Department of Transportation, it's kind of back to Tiff County, and they have funds to actually do striping, edge line striping in their, within their all-system safety program. Be a hundred percent federally funded, so ultimately, it would strip seven point eight-eight miles of Tiff County road. One would be Union Road from the Tiff County line to Golden Road, approximately seven point two miles. The other one is Omega, El Dorado Road from Union Road over to US forty-one, which is about seven point six miles, so about seven point eight miles of striping. And what the DOT needs is the, they need the county to accept that all-system project and to write a letter of...
Just a cover letter of acceptance.
A cover letter of acceptance for that, Mr. Chairman.
So that's going to be eight point two?
Yes, ma'am, we would need to add that as...
You did, I was there.
Out of eight point two. Well, I'm still hung up on that last one. There you go. That's attorney question, so. All right, I'm getting eight points, so I won't have to talk as much. You're right, Commissioner.
We have a motion, and that is eight point two.
Subtle.
Second, second. All in favor? All right, move on to, out of five minutes, workshop February seventh, twenty-twenty-three, executive session February seventh, twenty-twenty-three, regular session February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, executive session February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and commission workshop February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Everyone have a chance to look at the minutes? So we entertain a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second? Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right. Just letting you know, Commissioner Hester moved, then Commissioner Wood seconded to accept the minutes, so all in favor? All right. All right, now we to the public hearings, six point one. Chris, you want to come up and do this again, or? All right, TCZA twenty-three dash oh one petition being made by Mark Fletcher honoring Nick Stein agent for a special exception to allow solar farm to be constructed at four one nine two, Georgia Highway one twenty-five north. It was tabled from the last meeting, that's why it's still listed under public hearings.
Yeah, Mr. Ness, what we were having a little sidebar, and I apologize. We want to make sure that we had it right on our side. It was tabled. We did cover that, you covered that in the, in the public comments, so there is no need for a public hearing. It is just ready for the board's action now.
That's correct. And the question then, though, is, and I can, I then look back, I'm just going to go and ask the conflict of interest issue again, to be sure we're clear on that, before there's any vote on this, or any of the members that have any themselves, family members for businesses that they're involved in, that may have any interest whatsoever in the decision, in the property that, for which a decision is being made tonight. If so, please provide an affirmative response. That record reflect there are no conflict of interest with that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
There was a hearing, I wasn't here, I was sick the last time, and one had made it. So a lot of testimony or comments were received that I wouldn't be aware of, since I was not here. So how might I be informed of what's already been done, since we had some people talk earlier, but we're not having people talk in favor or against the motion as is presented today, or the petition? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense.
I mean, I don't know who did what or who said what at the previous meeting.
So the question is, the legal question is whether you could be required to vote in the absence of the benefit of the public hearing.
Excuse me?
I said, the question framed then would be whether you're required to vote. I'm just thinking.
Oh, I did, I need to vote.
Yes.
But I'm, you know, I see a lot of people out there today that I haven't heard. I guess I heard something here from each side, I suppose, in the public comments section.
Right.
But then that doesn't help me to find out what was said in the earlier meeting.
Now, I don't think that, I appreciate what you're saying, I don't think it's technically, it's not a conflict issue, so...
No, I don't think it's a conflict issue. No, I don't think it's a conflict issue.
It's a voting issue, but I don't believe it's adequate according to the extension. So I think you have to vote.
Well, I believe, I'm just, I don't have the same information the rest of the commissioners have, because I wasn't here.
I understand, okay.
All right, so is there a motion to be made for the, for this TCZA twenty-three dash oh?
Mr. Chairman, that's in District Four, and I'll just have to say, it looks like the petitioner has gone above and beyond to mitigate the concerns that were voiced at the hearing. And from, from the revised site plan, it appears that it won't even be visible from one twenty-five or the neighborhood to the south. And from what I understand, it, it won't even be able to be heard, because the, the noise level will be so low in the distance is there. So, and there's a bond there for the cleanup that's, will eventually take place one day, which, you know, we have a lot of businesses in town that don't even have that, you know, farms or anything, so. I, I think the petitioner has gone above and beyond what is, is really required, but he also, it appears that he tried to assuage the concerns of the neighbors there. And one thing we have to consider is the rights of the property owner. Quite frankly, I would prefer that to be a neighborhood, just like the one, the nice neighborhood to the south, but the simple fact is, I don't own that property. And there's only one man in the firm that does. And with that said, I'd make a motion to approve his petition.
Right, and a motion to approve as presented, we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Webb, second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Now we do have a public hearing, TC dash ZA dash twenty-three dash oh two, petition being made by Thomas McDaniel, owner, Jacob Owen, agent, with only that amendment of five acres of, 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 due tax amount, figure seven-two, park number six-nine. So, I'm just trying to, I ain't a culture, like, the place is on, it's a, 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 a car.
As Chairman has read, TCZA twenty-three dash oh two, Thomas McDaniel is owner, Jacob Owen is agent. The property, as you've seen in your facts, was there on Highway eight-two, tax amount seven-two, park sixty-nine F. Right now, the property's current weight is five acre track. Mr. Owens is prepared to buy the property from his mechanic, he already has a car lot in the city limits, he actually wished to move his car lot out into the county, has his intent to secure that property, build a building for his car lot and for storage, and then have the car lot. This application meant by our staff review, it was in completeness, the plan was on commission, met February ninth, heard, we have not had anyone come to that meeting in opposition, nor has our office fielded any phone calls or anything in opposition to this request. They, they voted to approve, recommend approval, and all in favor. I'd be more happy to ask any questions, but the property is surrounded by general business. It's not spazable, it continues from what they're asking for, it's the only little piece right there that is a.
Any questions? All right, let's roll.
Thank you, then. From this point, we will open the public hearing to address TCZA twenty-three dash oh two, and so we'll ask any of those that are in favor of this petition to step forward, please, and address the board.
I'm Jacob Owen, so I'm the petitioner, so I'm in favor of it. I'm gonna make it look better than it is now. I'm gonna put a brand new grand school building on there, pretty good building.
First, can you give her your address, please?
My address is one twenty-nine Elizabeth Road.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against the petition? Set your name and address, please.
I'm Benny Owen, fifty like Sandra. That's my son. I'm a graduate, of course.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Benny, what's your address again?
Fifty like Sandra. Exactly, I wanted to ask for a gentleman.
Anyone else? All right, seems no one else, we're closed the public hearing. This matter, before we bring it to a vote, I'll also address the board and ask if there are any of you that have any financial interest, business or family that may have a financial interest in the property that's being considered in this application? If so, please declare that conflict of interest. And record reflect that there are no conflict of interest is ready, this matter is ready for action. Mr. Chairman?
All right, do we have a motion on this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept TCZA twenty-three dash oh two.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
Regent, second. All in favor? All right, that's... All right, we took the consent agenda now, we did have one item to be removed from the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll come just, great. Regular commissioners, remember, we added, this item listed on your agenda is item seven point six, is a motion to approve county attorney county manager to meet apartment engineering PC to determine scope of work and not to exceed project cost for feasibility study. I actually have a not to exceed cost, so I have an updated agreement, so if we can put that back on the agenda, then you can actually vote on the not to exceed costs without us having to bring it back to the board.
And the scope of work piece, we'll iron out, and then, without also be an agreement that I'd like to, once we give the, the chairman authority to sign the agreement with the, so we don't have to bring that back, but we want to get the scope of work piece of the not to exceed amount in place, so we can then work against that amount for the scope of work.
So that'd be ahead of backers, eight point three, Mr. Jim, if that's okay with the board?
We need a motion, all right.
I'd make a motion that we add eight point three, not to exceed whatever the charges.
Yeah, a second.
Second.
Give it all up here.
Who said it?
It was both of us, but.
We'll give Commissioner Wood. All right, all in favor? All right, so what's left on consent agenda is seven point one, motion to approve purchase fifteen patrol vehicle mobile data units for a cost of forty-seven thousand eight-hundred forty-two dollars and five cents, and acceptance of the governor's office of highway safety grant, which will pay thirty thousand of the cost of purchasing units, with the remainder of seventeen thousand eight-hundred forty dollars and five cents being funded from Splosh Six Public Safety. Seven point two, motion to approve three-year contract with Everbridge for the emergency mass notification system for annual cost of twelve, twelve thousand six-hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Seven point three, motion to approve purchase and installation of new air conditioning system in the recreation multi-purpose building with work being done by D and M Service Company for a cost of forty-eight thousand one hundred fifteen dollars to be paid from Splosh Six Recreation. Seven point four, motion to approve lease buyout of Caterpillar Wheelmover for public works for a cost of eighty-four thousand eight-hundred seventy dollars to be paid from TIA funds. Seven point five, motion to approve proceeding with the permitting process to expand the landfill. And item seven point seven, motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash oh two, surplus vehicles. Are there any other items that any commissioner would like to remove to be considered separately from the consent agenda? Clear none, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Subtle.
Commissioner Webb has made a motion? Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right. All right, now we'll go to the regular agenda, eight point one, amendment of personnel policy regarding county holidays.
Mr. Chairman, the board discussed this during the workshop session, and the decision was made, given the, the, the members that all the time to discuss, the gist of it was centered around the addition or, is the just addition of Juneteenth as a holiday, or the replacement of a current, one of our current ten holidays with Juneteenth to be celebrated. So what you have in front of you are the current holidays listed, which are New Year's Day, Emory Day, Friday, Fourth Easter, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day. So those are the current recognized ten county holidays, and just strictly up to the board's favor. That's just looking for directions.
Okay. Just a summary of where we were at the workshop. Commissioner Hughes brought this to the board, and she is in favor of adding Juneteenth as an eleventh holiday, correct?
Correct.
And then I spoke that I would prefer to see it swapped out for one of the current holidays, so that we don't have the additional cost of an eleventh holiday, so it's just a very brief summary of where we're at, at the workshop. Would you like to add anything, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said to you and some of the board members, we have employees. First, let me go back and say, thank you, board, for even considering adding this. I really appreciate that. But now I have to think about the employees. We're talking about swapping or taking away. I think you'd think of it as taking away a holiday. We have employees that work more with less. We have departments that are short-staffed, but they still get the job done. I do not want to see the morale of the employees drop, because we are taking a holiday from them. We have been doing this for over twenty years, of giving them these holidays. Why would we take a holiday from them when we are financially able to add a holiday to, to this? And if we go on the same level as the state, we'll be lined up with the state. If we go along with what the, what our, our sisters have, our sister government have, and I'm talking about the city, we'll be lined up with them. And we service the same people as the city. So I would like to see us just add this holiday and not take away from the employees.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, the way I look at it, I mean, ten paid holidays is really good. I mean, a lot of, a lot of places don't get that, but I know we have it budgeted, we budget for every day for employees and all that, but also in that budgeting, you know, there's work that we supply for the, our county individuals, our residents. And I'm, I'm kind of looking toward giving up one and replacing with the other. And I look at Christmas Eve, because a lot of places don't shut down on Christmas Eve. I know, I work every Christmas Eve, and, you know, I expect Christmas Day off, and think that, you know, that could be a swap to do that. But that, you know, I mean, that's just my opinion, I just, you know, absolutely not against doing Juneteenth, absolutely not. But just being, you know, good, wise handlers of our kind of resources, to get our taxpayers, you know, the best buck bang for the money. And I understand your view too, about don't want to cause any decrease in morale, but that, that, you know, that's just my view.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, that made a statement at the workshop. I don't, I say personally, I just didn't mean to take it away from the employees, you know, still at that point.
I continue to disagree with the verdicts that we're taking away. We're not taking away, they'll still have ten holidays if we swap it out for one of the current days. We actually have three days we're giving them now, there's not traditional holidays, which is Good Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve, that's, I mean, those are not federal holidays, we're just giving them to employees, but, so they still have ten holidays if we just swap it out. And yes, we have a great team of employees, and we don't want to do anything to discourage them, but we're also likely to watch out for taxpayers' money. And this would cost us anywhere from forty to sixty, kind of, you know, from forty to sixty thousand dollars. And we, a lot of our taxpayers have jobs, they don't even get holidays at all, a lot of them have jobs where they get five or six holidays, and we're already at ten, and so, and we're financially able now, and probably financially able for next two or three years, who knows what the future holds for us, you know, finances, so. There's other federal holidays we don't observe, and I'm fine, and I'd like to add Juneteenth, but I would just like to see it done as a swap rather than an add, so. Just my opinion.
Do you think that it added, but as a swap, in my opinion?
I'm sorry, y'all keep saying swap. It's not a swap, it's taken away. If you, if you look at taking, if you look at taking, if you look at swapping Christmas Eve, you're taking Christmas Eve and adding a holiday. You're taking something away from somebody that you, that you've given them, you've given them this date. So let's just call it what it is, it's taken away, it's not swapping.
All right, do we need to vote on?
If we're gonna make a change, it does require a vote, Mr. Chairman, of the...
The one I was getting at, that we need to make a change of whether we're going to add or swap.
If you're gonna make a change, whether it's to add or to swap, if it's gonna change the way it currently sits, we do need a vote.
We need that vote before we decide which day we're gonna swap, or do it as two separate, or we need to decide which day the...
Now...
We can do it in one motion, Mr. Chairman, if the motion was to do it.
I'm a little confused right here. I'm their Brooklyn lawyer, you know? And what I'm saying, what I'm... If we, how are we gonna vote up? The voting on this would be, we voted to accept the Juneteenth as a holiday. Then you putting in there, changing out some timing, how can you do both at?
So, so, I, I think the motion, here in the attorney can help, but I believe if, if it was to swap a, a day, so let's say we, we just pick Good Friday. The motion would be to alter our personnel policies to reflect the removal of Good Friday as a holiday, and replace that with Juneteenth as a paid holiday.
But, but it got to be somewhere in there where we going to accept the holiday?
You, you can do it in two pieces. I mean, you know, obtain the motion to accept Juneteenth as recognized holiday for Tiff County.
Still an issue, because it's in...
In this budget year coming.
Right.
What I would, I would assume. I mean, that, because Jun, well, Juneteenth is coming before, so that, you'd have, you'd have it altered the budget side, that's a different issue. So let's talk about the procedure, then we talk about how it fits the budget. Either way, the vote to recognize Juneteenth, motion is second, but then you have a second, second vote about whether to also further modify personnel policy to eliminate, if that were the will of the board, a particular day that was agreed upon by the board. And so you, you can do it in two pieces.
Okay. All right. First piece, we accept the holiday. And if it's not agreeable, what date they wanted to, not they, we want to take off and put one in there, that can be, well, that'd be kind of confusing, because you already got it set, now we done voted to have the holiday. Am I right? If we vote, we vote to accept the Juneteenth holiday. Okay? We voted, that's passed. All right, now you gonna come back and ask the board, ask us to vote on which day to change out? And if we not agreeable with... And if we not agreeable with that, we are within.
Well, then if.
Am I making sense?
Yeah, yeah, yes. So if, if you left here, remember, the second vote about what you'll do about any present or existing holidays, or any other benefit is a decision for any benefit that the board has, is a, is a personnel policy decision that the board can address whenever that's so. But if you had, it, it'll work in the same manner as any other motion. You would have a motion to accept Juneteenth, if that's, if that's the will of the board, you got a majority, then that passes. That'll be a new holiday that'll be recognized, and the personnel policy will be changed to reflect that. Then, if there is a motion to also modify, change personnel policy to eliminate an existing holiday, and there's a proposal, and that carries the way to the board, then you got to vote. If it doesn't, if there were somehow that you got, there's no... You got seven, so you will have a time, it'll go one way or the other, you'll end up with a date, I would suppose, so. If, that's all I know to answer, you just got to follow the process, follow the rules of order, and make a motion, if somebody has a motion to make, if you get a second, it's got to be addressed by the board. Do you still think it's better to do it two pieces? Well, I'm saying you can do it either one, but right now, the motion's got to come from somebody, a motion has to be led, going forward, to be considered by the board. You can achieve the objective. If there were consensus, let's just say, Christmas Eve, I'll just choose it, and if there was a consensus, and it was Christmas Eve, you could do it one motion, you're gonna, you're gonna adopt and recognize Juneteenth, and you're gonna no longer recognize and provide Christmas Eve as a, as a holiday. But it's just as equal, you can achieve that equally as well with two motions. Let's, let's spread it to, so that we have a motion to, um, for Juneteenth as a holiday.
To make a motion that we recognize Juneteenth as a holiday.
We have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hester would.
And the motion is to amend personnel policy.
That was Hughes and Hester.
Yes. All in favor? All right, unanimous? All right, now the discussion of which day, um, I know Commissioner Wood mentioned Christmas Eve. I think his thinking there is, uh, that day moves around for us, it could fall on any day of the week. He had mentioned before that Good Friday falls on Friday, so that always gives the cus, uh, customers, the employees, uh, you tell him in the grocery business, he always gives employees a long holiday, a long weekend for a holiday, and then, of course, the Friday after, Thursday, Thanksgiving's always on Friday, so you get a long weekend there as well. However, um, some others mentioned that maybe we look at Good Friday because, uh, they do get a long weekend at Thanksgiving, and then just a lot of people like to have Christmas Eve, so they got, you know, more time for Christmas. So what would be other ideas or opinions? Mine would be Good Friday. I'm getting a break.
What is your Friday?
I'm good with Good Friday.
It's Friday for Easter, it's Friday for Easter.
Where comes the night?
It will be in April, I think it's, uh, December ninth, December seventh. So, so the staff did look at it, and if you look at the school calendar, Good Friday is not a day that, that school, or T I county recognizes a holiday, so kids ask school. So if we're trying to align days off for parents with days off for kids, that would, would be, uh, you know, that's, any time your kid's out of school and your, and parents are working, if you're a parent, it becomes a, a little tougher. So, I mean, that would be one thing that you could consider.
All right, both in opinion, standing?
Good Friday's okay with me.
Whoever makes a motion?
Neither.
All right, we have a motion as to which day.
I'm, I'm making a motion that we amend the personnel policy to replace, to, to no.
Eliminate.
To eliminate Good Friday as a, as a holiday.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All opposed?
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, so in favor was Webb, Wood.
Rigdon.
In Rigdon. Okay, and opposed was Hester, Stollnaker, and Hughes. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman?
So I am in favor of eliminating Good Friday. All right, item eight point two that was added on the regular agenda, twenty-twenty-five, uh, system safety project, Union Road, and I may have a red road.
Um, Mr. Hester and I, as Commissioner Hughes, uh, discussed it, I discussed it. I discussed it, uh, at great length when it was not time for my, uh, for my input. But it is, uh, just to kind of, to follow it back up, you have it in front of you. Uh, the, the Department of Transportation contacted us, they have, uh, federal funding for, for what they call, um, all system projects, and this is all system safety, uh, project. And, and if you look at, it would actually be two, um, portions of the roadway where audible striping cannot be placed, will be restrapped with the thermoplastic striping. Uh, that's the case in, in both instances, um, seven point two-one miles, that'd be from Cook, Catalina all the way to Golden Road, and then, uh, a portion of that would be, or Union Road. And then, Union Road from, uh, beginning of Union Road to State Route, uh, US forty-one, and, uh, that'd be at point six, seven miles, so it's a total of seven point eight-eight miles of, of striping, uh, state, and federal government's putting in fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, it'd be no money from the county on that. So we just need a letter accepting that as a, as a product of system safety.
All right, any questions? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Stollnaker, first. She'd rather be somebody else, because she has to write my last name.
Wood a little short, a little short.
All right, all in favor? All right. All right, then, item eight point three is the motion to approve the county attorney, county manager meeting with Harvard Engineering to determine scope of work, not to exceed project costs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was actually on the agenda as, uh, seven point six, was the landfill feasibility study. Uh, as we discussed at, uh, at the regular meeting, um, you know, if you go back and actually look at seven point five on the, uh, on the agenda, it was a, a motion approving, uh, given, the go-ahead to proceed with permitting process for the landfill expansion. I've talked with, with, with folks at the city, and that process will begin upon this vote. But also, because that permitting process is a lengthy process, it does give us time to e- evaluate the viability of a large-scale expansion of, of the landfill. And by viability, I mean fiscal viability, uh, so this would be a complete, basically a study, everything from tiff and fees to, to, you know, the whole, the whole gambit of what can we get enough traffic, and those kind of things. Um, so we talked with, um, Harvard Engineering, Inc., uh, and they have given us, uh, an estimated fee for the scope of work is twenty thousand dollars. That's a not to exceed price, if, if, for whatever reason, I, I fully expect it to be less than that. For whatever reason, if it were to go beyond that, we come back for the board. I, I don't foresee that being the instance, but that would actually, uh...